You're listening to Beyond the Campaign and this is episode number nine. Welcome to Beyond the Campaign. I'm your host, Michelle Glogeback, podcast publicist, author, and host of this show and Read the Damn Book. Here, you're going to learn from political candidates and from politicians. We're not just going to talk about the issues. We're going to talk about the human beings who are investing themselves in us so that we can invest ourselves in them. This is Beyond the Campaign. Hey friends, welcome back to another episode. I'm your host, Michelle Glogeback, and today we are headed to New Orleans, one of my favorite cities. And I am interviewing Danielle Christmas, who is running for city council of District E in the Ninth Ward. Danielle has quite the childhood story where her father was wrongfully convicted of murder. This is one of the big reasons why she's running for city council, along with the fact that she discovered after leaving New Orleans for seven years, that the city government can actually fix things when they want to. And so she is determined to not only be that fix for her neighbors, but to also be the example to her four children that this can be done. This was such a fantastic conversation. I know you're going to enjoy getting to know Danielle and really discovering what city council can do for your city. Hi Danielle.
Hi.
I'm so excited to meet you and I love your last name too. It's just-
Thank you.
Danielle Christmas will make anybody smile.
You know what? Everybody says that and I love it though. I love it. I have a twin. So we were like the Christmas twins at school. So any joke you had, like any joke that there is, I have heard.
That's adorable, the Christmas twins.
Yes. So that's why I remember the Christmas twins. Yes.
Can you take a moment to introduce yourself to everyone, please?
Yes, so my name is Danielle Christmas. I am running for city council District E. I'm based in New Orleans, anybody who's not familiar, it's the Lower Ninth Ward in New Orleans East. It's a huge, huge area, over 76,000 people in that district. So I'm running for them and to represent them. So that's who I am.
And I feel like the Ninth Ward probably got recognition when our new pope came into his office.
It did. Shout out to him. Pope Leo.
Yeah, yeah, right. I remember getting the messages, Pope Leo's from the Ninth Ward. He's one of our people.
Creo. I was like, oh, I'm here for it.
I love this. Now, you are a working mom who's decided to run for city council. Why? Why? Cause I know this, this is not a fun job, city council. It is where everyone complains.
You get the worst, you get the bad worst out of the good. Honestly, I ran because of my children, but the initial reason I ran was because of my dad. So he was arrested when I was a kid, when I was four months old, actually. We were in the car together. My sister and I and my mom, and he was arrested. And my dad was like 26 and I didn't realize how young he was. He was like 26. We were in the back of the car. He was pulled over. He was arrested. Later convicted, trial lasted less than 15 days. Later convicted of murder to death row in Angola prison. And if anybody doesn't know the history of Angola, I suggest you really look it up and read about it because it's terrible. It was a former plantation and then it was taken down, of course, and then named after a country in Africa. So not only did you enslave people there, you now put a, you know, prison there and named it after a country in Africa. So even more slap in our face and where they, they carry out slave labor laws, a legit slave labor laws. They're on horses and they're in the heat, day in and day out, doing, you know, labor. So, but he was convicted, you know, sentenced to prison, life in prison on death row. So that was why I ran initially was because of him. Because I didn't get to have my time with him at all. 10 years of my life was taken away because, with my dad, because of the prison system and incarceration system that the state of Louisiana has. And we're number one per capita. People don't understand that. That tells you right there that the incarceration system is a for-profit system. So I lost 10 years from, with my dad and it was just so sad and it was normal. This was a normal thing in the state of Louisiana, of kids being without their parents and grandparents raising them. And it was, it was so sad because that became my norm. Traveling on the bus to visit my dad in Angola, the bus lasted like, it was like hours on that bus. And he'll give us like little gifts that they make in prison or whatever. But that was my norm. I was, it was incarceration was embedded in my DNA because that's all I knew.
But he was wrongfully convicted, right?
Wrongfully convicted, but that happens so often in Louisiana. It's so often, I tell you. He works with, he worked with a group called The Innocence Project. They have now merged with another group, but he worked with them and they helped get him exonerated. But this is common. This is normal. And they offered him $10, so a dollar per year. They had him locked away. Right. And then he later on sued them, of course, and he won, but he was targeted after that, of course. That's the reason why I ran. And then I had moved away to Orlando for a little bit. Love, if anybody wants to know, it was love. But I ended up living there for like seven years and I noticed my streets were fixed. The light, streetlights had worked. I noticed there were options for my energy bill. I didn't have to just choose one. There was options. And I noticed it was a quality of life and I came back here when I had all my kids and I needed more help with my family. So I moved back and I'm like, this is a completely different, this is a Twilight Zone. This is completely different. And I had always known it, but I didn't realize it till I left. Like these potholes everywhere. I have to get a new tire like almost every other, every other month or so. I get air my tires like almost every week because I'm hitting so many potholes. And then the streetlights don't work and the energy bill is through the roof because their municipal court isn't handling it. It's a privately owned company. So it's a for-profit system. So you have energy bills that are like $900 and they can't afford it. And then you have insurance crisis is through the reef. So people can't afford their insurance. There's an affordable housing crisis. There's all of these things going on and we didn't have that back in Orlando. And I'm like, this is not normal. So why is it our norm? And then I had started doing research and I had came across Run For Something. And Run For Something popped on my Instagram feed and I was like, you're right. I can run for office, whatever. And I was like, you know, screw it. Let me do it. So I just, I put the information in and then it just went from there. And that's when I had met Melanie, I think. And she introduced me to a guy named Bob Morrell, running for city council as well. And he gave me the information and we were just talking, talking, talking. And I was like, this is my realm. I can do this. And I'm like, well, why not? I'm going to do this. And then this is how it all started and I've been doing it ever since. So, and like I said, I want to circle back. I ran for my children also because too many times we've been failed by the system. We've been failed so many times. If you hear me speak, I'll refer to it being a failing system. Because they failed my dad, they failed me, they failed kids all the time. There's a prison pipeline system that they thrive off of. Instead of giving them mental health or instead of giving them resources, they give them prison options, military options. It's like, that's not what we need. Children at some point straight off the path. Let's catch them before they stray, but you're so embedded in making juvenile systems, prisons, you prioritize that over education. And it just became a normal thing here. And I couldn't live in a world and I couldn't live in a state and a city knowing my son could be murdered at any time because of the gun laws or the fact that he could be in prison because he's autistic. My son's five years old, but he's huge. My son is, he's four feet tall. He's five, but he's going to get bigger. So at some point, he's going to be looked at as a threat. So you have a tall, black kid with autism who can't control their emotions regularly. So no matter if I call a cop, I run the risk of my son being shot because you're not prepared for this and you're not trained for this. So I'm living in a world where I'm scared for my children, you know, and education as well. Universal pre-K, pre-K for is not, it's not, you know, it's not free. You have to pay for that. So we live in a world where we don't prioritize education, safety and things like that. I couldn't have that be for my children. So I said, something has to change and we can do it. Utopia is possible, but we just have to kick the corporate greed out of politics. We have to get them out, get progressive people in office, get mothers in office, get fathers in office, get everyday people, teachers in office, city workers, everyday people in office. Cause they're, they're the only one that can represent us, is us. You can't have a politician who's out of reach with reality. There's no way. Cause you're spoon fed. You have a spoon in your mouth. Well, you have free healthcare. Your healthcare is free. You know, you don't have to decide between dentistry or medical. You don't have to decide that. You don't have to do that. But we do. City workers do. People do, you know? Mothers have to decide, okay, well, who's going to pay for my childcare? I have to go to this one. This is more cheaper because universal pre-K is not free. Or you're so pro-life that now you're pro-life to where you so focused on the kid and pro-birth. You're not focused on the resources that we need as free childcare, maternity leave and stuff like that. You're not focused on that because you're so pro-birth, not pro-life. So when we're stuck in a system like that, I have to now figure out, okay, universal pre-K is not free. So now who's going to watch my kid? Can I afford this? You don't have to worry about that because you guys have that in office, you know? You, you ostracize us and kick us off the curve because we're not in your bracket. We're not where you want us to be. So that's not normal and it's not okay because you got in the government to protect the serds, not dismantle, destroy and destruct. But that's what you're doing. So I said, okay, we need to kick these people out and get us in. And it's possible. It is possible. Cause if you look at what's going on in Baltimore right now with the children, and if anybody doesn't know, at one point, and the president's trying to make Baltimore seem really unsafe with his rhetoric right now. But if you look at Baltimore, it's the lowest crime has ever been. They have programs given to kids after school. Businesses also helping children after school. There's a lot of stuff going on in Baltimore right now that we can learn from. But they got rid of that rhetoric. They got rid of all of that stuff. Cause they put people first and we can do the same thing. We just have to get them out of office. So that's why I pretty much ran because it's possible. We just, you know, we just have to educate ourselves and get people in office. Because it is possible. Once again, we just got to do it, you know? And I'm tired, mother, I'm tired of every single thing that's happening right now. I'm really tired. What's going on with the gun laws right now, the safety concerns, women, pre-productive rights, universal healthcare. All of that I'm tired of. So, and we've been failed on a national level. We've been failed on a state level. So at some point, the local level needs to step up and say, I won't fail you. So that's what I'm doing right now. I don't want to fail anymore people because I've been failed so many times. I want you to love who you want to love. I want you to pay a bill, but you can afford another bill. I want you to afford your groceries and it's possible on a local level. We just have to do it. So that's why I'm running to do all of that, what I say and not, because I don't have a political affiliation. I don't have a political gain to this. I'm just a mother wanting to stop and protect her children because they didn't protect me. Cause you took my dad away. He didn't protect me. My father, my grandfather worked all day. My grandmother was in the house, but the government didn't protect me. My family had to. And yet I still was, you know, failed. So at some point, I don't want to continue to be failed. I don't want my kids to be failed, you know? Long story short, I know that's super long.
I love this on so many different levels. I, I love that you said you're pro-birth and not pro-life because I've gone on a tangent last week about what it truly means to be pro-life. And what we see right now as pro-life, quote unquote, is not pro-life. Because there's so much life that is lived after being born.
Exactly.
That was said so perfectly. And I also love that you are starting on this local level because I think people forget that everything locally is political. That just the potholes alone, we have a great new system. Our mayor has implemented an app where you literally can put down, there's a pothole here and there is someone within 48 hours fixing it.
Wow.
It is incredible. And I'm in San Jose, so we have a population of a million.
Wow, right.
They, they are getting on it very quickly. It is all possible. We're implementing more tech stuff. But it is all on this local level and the local then gets bigger and bigger. But so often we are, we're being fed so much chaos right now on this national level that people forget you got something going on in your own backyard.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
And it is fixable.
It's so fixable and they forget. It's like, no, no, listen, I understand nationally, you know, I understand we're upset on a national level. And I even more, we're more upset on, you know, the state level. But locally, we have the right to change all of this stuff. And we've had a pothole. I mean, it is so bad out here. It's not even funny. I have to get air my tires like every other week. I have my low pressures right now because it's, I hit a pothole every single day. And it's so bad, it's dangerous because now in the Lower Ninth Ward, especially everywhere, but especially in my Ninth Ward, there's these black properties. And if anybody doesn't know what black properties mean, because I didn't know at one point either. So black property just means overgrown and not taken care of. And it's like super, super high. You can't even see. It's almost like the rainforest out there. So, and after Katrina, Katrina, mind you, Katrina was 20 years ago. If you would step foot in the Lower Ninth, it looks like it's two years ago. I kid you not. And if you've ever listened to my stories, I'll talk about the mom who I see almost every day. She walks on the, she walks in the street and mind you, the street light did not work for two years. And it wasn't until the Super Bowl that this light started working. Exactly. So it wasn't until the Super Bowl that the light started working, but this mom used to, and she still does. There's this overgrown lot and she has to walk on, in the street with her children. Because there's no sidewalk. There's, it's so overgrown. There's no sidewalk. So your child can't even ride a bike, you know? The car can't see you because you can get hit by a car. So now she's waking up every day risking her and her children's life just to get her kids an education, to go to school, to get on the bus. And now then she now has to go home and to get herself ready for work. But simple things like that is quality of life. Cut the property, you know, hold the property owner accountable. Too many, you can throw so many cold enforcement and permits at this person, it won't get done. Take the property back, make a community land trust, make a community garden, get agriculture involved. There's so many things that can be done on a local level. We just don't, we choose not to do it. But the mom has to now walk in the street and get hit by a car because there's no sidewalk. Cause we don't prioritize quality of life in that neighborhood. We don't prioritize children. We don't prioritize the mothers. We just don't do it. And it's this small stuff like that and the pothole that just sits right next to it. So now even now she's walking in the street, a car is coming. So now they have to dodge that pothole. And she runs the risk of being hit by this car because they're dodging the pothole. You see, so there's so many factors that can avoid a lot of these things. You guys, potholes fixing what, 48 hours you said? We have a pothole that's been sitting there since I was a child. I just turned 31 last week. That pothole is still there because they don't prioritize us. But Chalmette and it's, Chalmette is different. Chalmette's not a part of Orleans Parish. So Chalmette, they, they did their work on a pothole, right? No, it was a street. This, this construction lasted maybe three days. Compared to us, our construction goes for years, years. Because the developers are in the back pockets of the politicians. And the longer that project goes, the more they get paid, which I had learned. And I'm like, this is, this is not normal. Like this, I'm so sick of seeing this orange and white cone. I'm done seeing it. But it's so normal where we live and it's like, this is not normal anywhere else. So why is it here? Why?
Do your constituents, are they, as you're talking about these stories, are they recognizing what is wrong and how it needs to be fixed? Because I wonder if you're living in, if all you see is that pothole every day and you think it can't be fixed and you don't know that the next, you know, suburb over, they're fixing things and they're getting construction done quickly. You might not realize the possibilities that you are missing out on. Are you bringing this to light and are people suddenly like, yes, please, this is what we need?
They know it. Surprisingly, they already know it. Cause they'll, anybody you talk to, the elderly, the young people, and this is what they say. This is like, oh, New Orleans here. So they'll be like, don't white people over there fixing that stuff. I'm like, no, no, no. It's not just they're white. It's just a different government. This government is fixing their stuff, but they're taking care of their people. Yeah, they're taking care of their people. New Orleans isn't taking care of their people. So we've called this out at several meetings. We've talked about, anybody you talk to, they'll, they'll talk about it and they'll say it. But I don't think they know to, they're so, we're so used to it. It's normal. And I keep trying to tell them, this is not normal. This is not normal. If you go anywhere else, this is not normal. I went to Orlando for seven years. I didn't change my tire for four years. I didn't hit a pothole. I'm like, and I came back here, I'm like, I have to hold my car like this because I'm hitting so many potholes and the streetlights don't work. And I continue to say this in certain areas, we don't fall within your economic category. That doesn't make us less than, you know?
Right.
Because we don't live in the French Quarter, because we don't live in Tremay or we don't, in St. Charles and all, and Lakeview and all that. And these are the more expensive areas. Just because we're not in those areas, that's not mean we're less than. Because the same people, because let's be honest, artists are the heart and soul of New Orleans. They're the heart and soul. The chefs, the cooks, the dancers, the musicians, they are the heart and soul. They bleed New Orleans. And if you take that away, what do you have left? You just have a city. We, the people make up New Orleans. Let's just be honest. So if you don't give them healthcare, you don't give them a proper place to live, you don't cut the cost of their energy bill where they can go to work. Cause they have to, they give their all to these places, to these tourists. They give, and they love it. They, they give their all because this is who they are. The second lines that we do, the music that we sing, the songs we do, the dance, the dance we do, that's from us. That's culturally, that's us. And you can be black or white, Vietnamese, anything, but that's culturally us because we bleed culture of New Orleans. So when you give your all to a place where tourists are and you come home to a pothole, you come home to a street light that doesn't work, you come home to a super high energy bill because the city council refused to regulate it. What does that say about me? You're saying I'm less than, but I can give my heart and soul to you and you give me nothing in return. But you can say, I appreciate you guys. Tourists come here to see us and dance and all this other stuff and the music that we give you, but you don't appreciate us. So when the lights go down and we go home, we're left with nothing. And that's not fair and it's not okay. And we have the right to regulate it, but we choose not to. And I say this every time I talk, poverty is a result of government. It's not a result of people because they're not doing their job. And when we get community-based organizations, they do what government won't do. It's not that they don't do what government can't do. They do what they won't do. And it happens time and time again. And to slap it in our face and say, you're, you're less than because of where you live, it's wrong. And it's not okay. And people, like I said, we've had the town hall meetings. We've talked about it. Any person you talk to, they'll say, well, they take care of them in this neighborhood, but they don't take care of us here. They know it already, but we're so numb and we're tired of it. At the same, it's contradicting because we're tired of it, but we're numb to it because they think nothing can be done. But that's because they haven't seen it differently. And it wasn't till I left, I saw differently. Cause my mindset was super small. I was ignorant at one point because I was a kid, you know, I didn't know no better. So I didn't know this stuff was fixable. I didn't know what government can and cannot do. And it wasn't till, I was educated, yes, but it wasn't till I left and I saw, this is what other people have as a quality of life. This is quality of life here. And then I came back, I'm like, hey, you guys, this isn't normal. Like, listen to me, listen to me. This is not normal. And they're like, whatever. Like, no, 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 no. Listen to me. This is not normal. There's streets that work. There's streetlights. There's, there's energy options, you know? You just don't have to choose this one utility company. There's options. We have options. And it was like talking through a horn and nobody's listening. And I was like, I'm going to run for government. That's how I'm going to get you to listen. And then, and we started talking about it and then you get feedback, like, yes. Cause when you get in a certain position of running for office, I can talk to you all day as a neighbor. We can vent all day. But when I'm running for office, you're going to listen, you're going to hear me. And I say, well, what are the issues that you have? And they'll tell me, like, okay, great. Here's my platform. And they listen because now I'm in a position to where I can fix it. And then you realize, oh, we have this much in common, but we talk about it as neighbors, but now I'm in a position of to be in office. You're listening more to me and I can change it. So they'll agree with me, they'll aman me and we'll talk about it when they know the position I'm in. But when we're neighbors, we'll just vent. So they know what's going on. They, they know. But now they have a voice and they're, they're receptive to it. But they're tired. It's like, I'm tired, but we have to vote different, you know?
You've mentioned that you're tired. I think we're all tired. But you're tired not only as a citizen, as a mom, and yet you're still waking up and making the time and taking the energy to actually run to make the change.
Oh my goodness. Oh God. I've lost, I did the math earlier. I've lost like 15 pounds running this campaign. I've lost 15 pounds. I've had COVID. Cause it's, people don't understand as a mother, just hats off to moms, like hats off. Cause like I said, I was ignorant at one point because then I wasn't a mom. And it wasn't till I have children and I have four, I have four kids. I have a three-year-old, a four-year-old, a five-year-old and a 16-year-old. So you have to, I wake up every morning. I wake up at 5:00 AM every morning and I get them ready for school. My girls go to daycare. My son goes to autism therapy and my daughter goes to high school. And I get them ready and I'm, I'm doing it. I'm working during the day. So once I drop them off at five, you know, I'm up at 5:50, 5 o'clock and then I'm at the door by 7 o'clock. So I'm dropping everybody off where we need to go and I get to work and I'm working like eight hours a day. And then I go pick them up. I get my son, I get my daughters and then I have to now make dinner, homework and stuff like that. And then now whatever downtime I do have, it goes to the campaign. Say on weekends, it goes to the campaigns. I have forums like almost every single day that I have to now go to. And people don't realize how hard it is as a mom in politics. Because you still have to show up for your kids. You have to show up for them all day. No matter if you're tired, you're hungry, you're exhausted, you have COVID, you have the flu, you have to show up for them. You still have to be an example to them because I bring my girls everywhere. I bring my two daughters everywhere. And my son, like I said, he's autistic, so he likes to be in his bubble. So I don't bother him too much about overwhelming spaces. But my daughters, I bring them everywhere I go. And I cannot tell you, so little backstory, just to get a little candid, that dad isn't in that life. So I'm doing a hundred percent of everything. So when I don't have a babysitter, they're with me at these forums. I had a woman, and bless her soul, she was so sweet. It was Alliance for Good Government. I believe her name was Kim. And I got there late, of course, because my daughters were having a fit. I got there like late, so I did the late slot. And this woman, she took my daughters for me and I was, I was at my forum talking and she took my daughters for me. And I can see them. So the whole time I'm doing this, shh, place your phone, place your phone. And she took them and she sat down on the stairs and colored with them, gave them pins and stuff like that. And she watched that whole forum. Mind you, this was an endorsement forum. So I was trying to get money from them and she's working for me, secondly. So she, she sat down and she was great with them. But people don't realize what women go through, what moms go through. Because I didn't have a babysitter, so I bring them everywhere with me because the cost of childcare is so expensive sometimes. So they go everywhere with me, but she was another, she was a mother also. And I can just tell moms know moms. So she was like, and she was a kindergarten teacher at one point too. And she ended up being a president over that organization who were trying to give me the endorsement. So she was like the president over the whole thing, but she sat down with them the whole entire time. And I was so grateful for her because women and like moms, you don't get an option. Sometimes we don't get an option. It's either the government to you or they don't come with you. Do you have a babysitter? Yes or no? Nope, then you're coming. You know, we don't get that option to sit down and breathe. So I have them in that political realm with me so they can see what mom's doing. I want you to gain this recognition of seeing the change I'm trying to have for you. And I want you to see that, yeah, your mom's, she's strong and I'm preaching this because I want you to see me in this world. I said, I want you to know you can do this also. So they go with me everywhere, but it's exhausting because you're tired. And it's like, there's so much I can say about being a mom, but there's not enough I can say about it. Because it's, it's a beautiful, beautiful thing because we do this for our kids, you know? But especially mothers, it's like, we wear a different type of hat. And it's hard being in the political world because I don't have a babysitter sometimes, like I said. And they, everybody, you can tell, I was at another meeting. This is, I love, I love moms because they'll, they'll take my daughters to the bathroom for me. She's like, I see you talking. Let me take them to the bathroom for you. And, but I knew this woman, so she took them to the bathroom for me and she'll, she'll give them some snacks. And it's, it's just anywhere I go, anywhere I go, a mother will recognize my struggle. She's like, let me take them for you really quickly. And they'll do it. And I wouldn't have, I wouldn't even have to know them. But she was like, let me help you. Let me get them a juice box. Are you okay if I give them this? And granted, I'm watching, I'm making sure they're good people, but you know, it's just moms. And I leave these places like crying. So, oh my God, thank you so much because you're amazing. I don't, you don't know what you've done for me, but I do. And it's just, you know, it's a different type of love from mothers, man, because they help you so much. But people don't understand, when I go home, I am exhausted because my job does not stop. I don't just turn off, yeah, I turn off the Danielle political hat, but I don't turn off the Danielle mom hat. That's going, that's 24 hours. Even when I'm waking up, that's all day and it's mom's period. And you don't recognize it until you're a mother. And everyone says pregnancy is a beautiful thing. Mothers are, it is amazing. Don't get me wrong. But that, that is hell. Okay? That is hell. It's hell. Because I have to regulate my emotions and your emotions. So it's a whole, it's a beautiful crazy mess. But mothers in politics, mothers period, you can just, even in certain spaces, moms are going to be moms. And I love it so much because I don't have that help. So yeah, it's just, it's just amazing to be honest, but it is tired, you know?
I love that you're taking the kids with you because you mentioned earlier that you, you felt like you were ignorant until you moved away and you saw these things. But you're changing that for your children by showing them, here's what you can do. Here's how city government works. You're showing up in all of these places and doing the same thing for your neighbors. That alone is huge. I've taken my kids canvassing. They've door knocked. They know how to do all these things. So, you know, I, I think it's so important that they do know these things. Because we have people who don't even know who their city council member is. And the other night I was so proud at the dinner table, my 10-year-old son goes, so I just want to make sure I have this right. Our city council member is Casey and then our congressman is Panetta. And he went all the way up through the senators and got them all right. And I was like, do you understand? That's what I said.
What? That's amazing, but that shows what you're doing as a mom though. Because my daughters, we had went to a protest, a march. It was a real protest, it was a march. Cause they're trying to put a grain train in the Lower Ninth Ward. It's a grain terminal that they're trying to put here and it's gonna, it's gonna pass 80 times a day. And the horn's going to be super loud. It's going to shake our foundations. It's gonna, it's gonna release grain dust. And anybody know anything about grain dust? It's a magnet for molecules. And it's going to attract all these type of respiratory issues in our neighborhood. And it's more of, they don't care because we've been hit the hardest after Katrina. We've received 93% of water. We have not bounced back yet. So for you to place something here in this area, you know why you're doing it. You feel we're less than and you put it here. So we had a march on Tuesday, on Tuesday, yeah, on Tuesday. And this was our first march. I was a proud mom. They had the posters. They were walking, they were saying a chant. I was like, you know, it's a safe march. Cause I would never bring them anywhere unsafe. So this is a safe space for them to be in. They had this huge poster. Both of them had to hold it themselves, little people. And then they were chanting and I was like, oh my God, I'm so proud. I was like, proud mommy moment right now. And they're, they're getting their photos taken, but I wanted them to understand, you can change government. Just because you are a girl, you can do anything you want to do. And I had to correct them because it's like, can I be a mommy when I grow up? I say, yes, you can, but you can be a mommy and something else. You don't just have to be a mommy. And it's okay just to be a mommy, but you can be that and something else. So they were there and I just, I want them to stand in their essence to know you can do this. And I pushed for that so hard. I couldn't go, like, this is, this is our DNA. Protesting is in our DNA. So when they held the poster, saying the chant with me, I was like, this is why I'm doing this. This is why. Because I want my daughters to know, if you want to run for office in 20 plus years or, you know, whatever, X amount of years, you can do this. You know, because my mom did it. And this is, this is what we can do. Cause we want women in office. We want mothers in office. We want people who love each other in office, but especially women. I want you to know this is possible. If you see your mom doing it, that burns a fire in the belly. And I feel like that's what was happening. Cause they were like, stop the grain train. And I was, they had the fist up and everything. I was like, Cause they were like, stop the grain train. And I was, they had the fist up and everything. I was like, I have succeeded in my life. If I don't win, I have succeeded with this. Because they were doing it. And I'm like, this is how you shape the next generation of leaders. Putting them on the forefront, safe, of course. Putting them on the forefront. And I loved it. I'm like, I'm gonna stand in my, my motherhood. I'm gonna stand in my essence of being a mom. And I want my daughters to stand in this essence too, to know that their mom is doing something. And I just love it. Yeah, I love it. Whenever you teach our son, they know everything. I'm like, ah, this is how we change the generation. This is how we break generational curses, generational ignorance. This is how we do it. Because if we put our kids on the forefront, cause they're, they're quite smart. They're smart. If we put them on the forefront, they'll succeed. And if we teach this stuff early, they'll know. They know, cause I taught my son, right now what I'm teaching my son is consent. So he, his autism, so he likes to just hug you.
Sure.
I'm not, I understand you love affection, but you have to act. So what I do is, and I get, I get some controversy from it, but it, it has to be taught. So he'll run up to me and hug me and say, no, 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 no. Say, no, you asked me, can you hug me? He's like, okay. So can I give you a hug? Yes, you can. And my daughters are doing it now too. So they'll ask me before they touch me. And it's because, and it's not that I don't love them. It's because I'm teaching you a way of life. You have to act. Because some people don't like affection and you can't get upset when they don't. Um, because my daughter, I'm still gonna fun around with my kids. My daughter and my other daughter had a conversation. And I was like, this is how I know I'm, I'm doing it correctly. Because my daughter, my four-year-old wanted my three-year-old to give her a hug. And my three-year-old said, no, I gave you a hug earlier. And she paused and she was like, but I still love you though. I'll give you a hug later. Mm-hmm. So she knows to say, no, I don't wanna hug. It's okay to say no, but I'll hug you later when I'm comfortable. And the same thing with my son. Affection, yes, but consent. And this is how we teach young, this is how we teach young adults to be good humans, you know, and not touch. Exactly. Just goes a long way as a young age. So, uh, kudos to you for doing that. Just, it's amazing what we can do with these children at a young age and teach them the values of being a good human. And knowing, knowing government, knowing what's going on. Um, cause my son asked me, he was like, how did America start? I was like, oh. You got time today? I was like, have a seat. I was like, I was just going at it with him. Granted, he didn't know everything. But he knew how America started. He knew it wasn't the original name. He knew why. But, uh, this is how you teach, and this is how we, we don't, we don't repeat history. On many different levels. When you teach it properly and correctly. Um, so yeah.
And so much is a learned behavior. So much.
Yes.
And if we don't teach them, yeah, I, I had this conversation just the other day about what our, our young boys are picking up off the internet.
Oh my God, yes.
Well, if you're not talking to them, somebody else is. And I don't care which side of the aisle you are on.
Yep.
You best be talking to your sons and your daughters. But if that's where the concern is, then it starts at home.
It does, yes. Oh my goodness. I love that you're doing that. Cause my son, he listens. So he likes Roblox. We all know about Roblox.
Oh, it's banned in our house. I, I've said, from the, from the day one, I said, no, your friends are on it. That's one you can't be on. And I explained it.
Trying. I love that you did that. I'm trying to do that. I love that you do that. I turned off the chat on his though, so no one can communicate with him. But he's playing a game, but I don't monitor everything. I love that you're doing that. I need to do that. But he, um, like the guns, I ban. So I ban toy guns. I ban the, um, the games on the TV. I ban guns. Cause I have a rule in my house. Um, everybody, it's controversial, but I don't like guns. Um, that's the number one cause of death to children. I don't like guns. So I don't allow them to have water guns. I don't allow them to have play guns. Um, just because it can lead to something real in real life. So I don't allow it. And like violent video games, I don't allow. But certain games like Roblox, I, I monitor, but somebody's talking to them. Somebody, they're doing something like these brain rot games. You have to pay attention to what all that is. Um, so I love that you banned it, but I haven't gotten to that point yet. But I, somebody is talking to them. Cause he'll say something. And I'll go, no matter the fact, he said, I don't like the color pink. Cause girls like pink. And I was appalled. I was like, who taught you that? And I tried to say it in the nicest way possible. Cause I don't want him to be threatened. I said, well, who taught you that? He didn't wanna tell me, but I knew it was because of the video games. I knew it was because of Roblox and YouTube. And I was like, if you don't teach your child, somebody else will. And now I'm like, I refuse to have a misogynist son. I refuse. So we're gonna break that curse real quick. So I now teach him what he can and cannot do. Pink is for everybody. Um, if you wanna wear nail polish on your fingernails, you can definitely do that if you want to. Um, we're not, we're not in a household agenda bias. Cause if you wanna wear a dress, by all means, wear a dress. But I, I won't force you. But if you wanna wear it, by all means, do what you gotta do. Um, but the misogyny, I teach it quick. Cause it's like, we're not gonna grow up like that. We're not gonna do that. And you're right, you have to teach your child before somebody else does. Cause somebody taught him that. And I was like, we're not, we can't. I can't go down this road of the, the male ego in my son. I can't do it. Cause I failed as a mom if you go down this road. Um, so we're gonna fix that. We're gonna nip it in the butt real quick. Before you leave out this house, you know, you're not being taught that, you know? No.
You, you're doing an amazing job. I'm, I'm so. Thank you. But you're running for office. You are mombing it. You are crushing it. I, I'm so excited that we got to connect and
Right?
Yes. And I'm gonna spread. I know people in New Orleans. I know people from New Orleans. We're, that's what we're doing here.
Connecting, talking about it, you know?
Yes. Where can everybody find you to learn more?
So I am on Instagram. I haven't made a Facebook yet. I need to do that, but I have not. Um, so I'm on Instagram, um, so, and my website. So it's Danielle for District E on Instagram. And I'm on TikTok now. My six-year-old may be on TikTok. So right, on TikTok. And I have, um, my website's DanielleforDistrictE.com. So if you wanna reach me, you know, you can reach, uh, reach out to me through there. If you wanna volunteer, just, just talk to me. We can definitely do it. Cause I love having these conversations, especially candid conversations. We have to have them. You know, it's, we have to. It's just the day nature that we're in.
Yes. Thank you so much, Danielle.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for having me. You've been a pleasure. You're amazing. I like talking to friends. Like you're amazing. Thank you.
This was such a pleasure, getting to know Danielle, hearing her story, hearing so much about why motherhood is so important to her. What she's doing as a mother and how and why moms are needed in office. It starts local and it grows from there. But so much can be done when it comes to our city council. When it comes to connecting with them, finding the changes, getting the changes that each and every one of us have. So I encourage you to go learn more about Danielle, learn about your own city council. Find out at the very least who your city council member is that is representing you. It is so important to arm yourself with this knowledge and to really learn about the people who are representing you. It goes beyond the campaign.